Be five thirty in a forum being established, we'll bring this meeting to order. First up tonight is transferred to appropriation, we'll start with the budget committee.
Over forty-eight dash point four A for a raise of ten thousand nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents.
I thank you for your time, this ten thousand nine hundred and six dollars and eighty-two cents is for a server to be put in at the Olive Street Warehouse. We have all the election security equipment ready to go for the warehouse, but it needs an updated server in order to manage all of the equipment. So, this, the, all the original equipment is paid for by the grant, but we were unaware at the time that we needed the server to support all the equipment. So, that's what this is about.
A question. Have a motion of forty-eight. Motion is something. Motion in second, unfavorable, although the favors stay on, those opposed. There goes the counsel with favorable recommendation. Bill number forty-eight dash twenty-four B, appropriate million dollars.
Paul Backsmeier, Board of Commissioners, just wanted to say a couple of words about this appropriation and trust and the next. As you know, we are conducting facility condition assessment, determined a lot of beats here in the city building, capital planning committee has advised of that. We have unanimity, reasonable capital planning members that need to do something about the needs. Those include boilers, leak leaks, plumbing, perhaps window, electrical and windows, but those can be deferred. I just wanted you to know that this doesn't mean we're not going to come back with the full capital improvement plan in your consideration. Hope that you will favorably consider both the request for a million dollars for the boilers and the immediate repairs to the courthouse one roof and some selective repairs to this building. I believe may have already been taken care of. So, with that, I will ask three Roberts to fill you in on the details of the million dollar appropriation.
So, I tried to create, just on this cover page, a quick, a good summary to bring up with speed in regard to this project. Oh, this item, I think, has kind of been on everyone's minds since we heard the presentation by DLZ. It's an assessment, this is an item that they flagged as needing crucial replacement in order for this facility to be warm, safe and dry. And so, with that, we wanted to bring this forward. So, we're asking for a million dollar appropriation out of any day. That was advised through the capital planning committee process. The existing boilers are obviously outdated, they're inefficient, they leak, and they struggle to support the weight that they carry with the county city buildings, law building and the courts campus. And the building closures, obviously, have also been due to the boilers not being able to keep up with the temperature. And so, we gathered preliminary budget estimates from two different vendors, both H and G and Ideal Consolidated for the replacement. And then, something that goes hand in hand with that is also the AMC controlled replacements, which was not included in your original packet, so I did include that in this summary packet. The quotes for the two boiler replacements by the two vendors we had quote were in the original packet. Those, let me know. But essentially, once we do the boilers, we also need to do the controls because the controls are also greatly outdated. And the Board of Commissioners has been gave the LC to hopefully give us a recommendation as to what boiler specifications we need to be looking at. We don't want to go off of current specs, obviously, because it's not adequate and we want to be able to gain efficiencies. And so, DLC is working on a recommendation for us. Future items, obviously, we expect to take this to bid in 2024 through the Board of Commissioners and hope to settle the work with minimal impact to both the people working and coming to this building for business. Are there any questions? I have John Baker here, who is our facility maintenance manager, if you guys have actually met him. This is John Baker, he has an extensive history in facility maintenance management coming to San Jo County, so he's been a huge asset, so I wanted to have him here if there's any technical questions.
Thank you. The request is for a million dollars for this particular, these aren't detailed bids, they're estimates. But if the bids were to come in close to the estimates are, including the graphic user interface and the actual estimate of at least determines yes, it pushes us over than others. If our points identified elsewhere to account for that, if we're over a million, or does the requesting could be adjusted to account for the potential without having to come back?
Thank you, I appreciate that, you are right. And I think we have identified additional funding if it is needed within the maintenance budget. We do have some building and structures funds within various funds, actually. And so, if it does happen to go over, I think we can cover, but this will at least get us, you know, ninety-five percent of the way there. Yeah, already sitting in a, in the line ahead of the.
What we did with the request for bid for these was installation and removal of the old ones, because that's a if you incorporate that with control systems and everything else, it's refreshing the system completely. Because right now, the boilers are eleven million BTU each. They're running at ten million BTU each. There are insufficient availability of parts in order to upgrade those to the eleven million, so that's why they're at ten million. What we're looking at was is higher efficiency, much better, newer boilers. So, the estimate from everybody we've talked to is to replace those with ten million feet and put them into a leak-wag system. For, you know, once, you'll run, they both need to run fine, once a week they'll rotate around the lifespan.
Thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Shipp.
The deals are your four, I thought they identified that we have replaced the boilers more than these. They're not the original.
You.
They are, though those numbers from DLC, we noticed that as well. It's, it called out twenty years as the, as since them being replaced. Everything John and I could find actually lends itself to much older, in fact, being original. I think they've been, parts have been replaced, they've been repaired, but for replacement, I can't find where is that.
That area, which was at the build zone of the building. And valving that we've had replaced and everything, if they're dated on, on the valves, it's the same thing, they're coming back to the same kind of date period. Yeah, everything we can find, it puts them at original. One has been, had a tube replacement on it, several years back. Two boiler leaks, you know, it's not really in a good position to be able to do any kind of repairs of that.
Those, we mentioned the fact that we're not got, something to the effect, we aren't got as far as capacity, we're looking at an additional capacity. I'm sure whether you put in, Northside, I have a lot of capacity, you know, it's, and now, so we're all in that.
It's, it's part of what they're looking at, we looked at both putting the two replacement boilers in and then also, what if we had to put a boiler in just for the law building and separate that off from the CCB complex with the, with the courthouse involved. Somewhat of an unusual system, because the courthouses, it actually takes the steam, it absorbs hot water and does hot water heat. In the law building, it have steam and hot water, so it complicates it a little bit, but yeah, that's something we've been looking into as well.
What's the size of the old boilers now?
Besides the old boilers, they're running at ten million, five hundred BTUs.
No, I didn't mean that, I meant the physical size, so, yeah, I didn't.
They're, they're about half the size of this room.
So, the new boilers, what, what would their size?
They're, they're downsized somewhat, I can't tell you exactly the size, I don't know if that's, that's probably in here. But we looked at trying to downsize and put four boilers in, the smaller ones, but we did not have a footprint for it, so we had to go back to the stipulation of two larger boilers to, to cover the BTU requirements that we needed.
And that's because of the maintenance area around each boiler.
Yes, because they're all up on the fifth floor, they're all in that, that room, but there's also AC or ventilation and, and all those types of equipment up there as well. So, the footprint to put something in larger, plus they're on a built up footprint of footing for them. So, yeah, we tried that too, and then just, we showed up and gave them something that's feasible.
How do you think it's doing them then?
Actually, they're talking about bringing them in in sections, they can help in putting them in and cutting the old ones apart, taking them down in section, so.
I think the H and G estimate falls for a crane.
So, we've looked at.
Couple different.
We looked at both avenues, and if it's a crane, we have the capabilities of the outer wall on that side.
Any other questions?
So, obviously, this needs to be addressed immediately, but you're also talking about a specific investment. And you're saying issue an investment to possibly replace boilers in, for the area of the courthouse in this sense.
No, this would, this would cover the complex. Where the law building, if the law building was separated or anything, that could be separated off and having a smaller boiler. And having a smaller building, bill, boiler just to handle the law building, if that was going to be separated off the complex. Right now, these boilers would have adequate to cover everything in the complex with the law building.
Okay, but still, I guess, I'm, what I'm getting to is, I know this has to be done right away, but with that investment, I guess I should correct this to Backmeyer. Are we still going to consider moving with, after doing this investment? I don't mean to put you on the spot.
You can put me on the spot, that's a fair question, but it's a good question.
Thank you very much.
I don't see, based on the numbers we're seeing, any way that we can abandon this building entirely. Question in my mind is, to bring to council, is do we renovate the entire building? Or do we move somewhere else and not renovate six through fourteen right now? Regardless, we have to keep this building, the cost of demolition, the cost would be just prohibitive.
That's, that's how I was looking at it, I just wanted to hear please, your opinion, your perspective.
Also, something else to keep in consideration is for the courthouses. All the supporting CSAP and all those are also in prosecutor's offices, all those are in the county city building as well. So, I don't see any way that you could abandon this, this building totally.
Thank you, thank you. The chiller is twenty, is twenty-two years old, separate and they, separate from the boiler? And I'm excited to see twenty-eight. Is that like a My Body Number Two, if that goes?
It's up there, but right now, we just brought the chiller is up to speed again this year. Went through them, we've got a couple valves that need to be replaced, but the chiller conditions, tubes and everything right now look very, very good. So, I don't think that that's something that would have to be addressed for a number of years down the road. How long, you don't know, but it's not something that we would immediately have to address.
Um, what kind of warranty that with the boiler? Like a standard one-year, two-year, five-year, it's great?
Yeah, and I think it's, it's like a two or three year probably, but I don't have that in front of me. But it would be a standard manufacturer warranty on the package.
I'm always thinking of the worst, say it's a lot more than a million. So, then, we say again, a million, two million, three million, four, we're going to take that on a rainy day, Mr. Dalton, or what do you think?
Yes, the capital group would like to see it come out of rainy day. You just put a bunch of money in rainy day two months ago. And this is, this council's rain, you actually had rain in the, in the courthouse.
We mentioned limited roof repair.
Yes, we found some areas that we've been dealing with, seems like they've been dealing with for a while. When I came on board, we took a look at it and said, need to get somebody in, we had several roofers come in, found some cracks in the, in the roofing, got them addressed. I think we pretty much have most of the roof reas, dropped, and then taken care of, minus the courthouses. So, the county city building lease that we had on fourth floor and up on top and stuff have been addressed. Now, we did find some in the law building, that's been done, so.
Where else is the rotunda?
Yes.
But not, but not the roofing, that could hear your roofing.
That's the next.
That got an award like twenty years ago, something with great reputation of DLC and a award.
It's a beautiful.
So, that roof wore out.
So, they tell me, and this goes into the next request a little bit, they tell me that it's the underlayment because the, it was last done in nineteen ninety-six, about twenty years forward. You go into the attic.
Well, I don't know, it's a bit of a, can't figure out why that, remember that, like, you heard of the award being on the wall in the commission office, or DLC design work on that roof system specifically, for working on the ring up.
The outer shell, the, was, the platelets that are out there, those will be taken out, removed just enough to be able to put together a shield in there. For those, I don't think unless we find any damage, we really have the intention of replacing this. In fact, one estimate gave us that they would have to turn them up by a down number, so each one would have to go back in the exact location.
Thank you.
And they have a motion, bill number forty-eight. Second, all this favor, they have opposed and signed. Bill number forty-eight dash twenty-four B goes to the council with favorable recommendation. Bill number forty-eight dash twenty-four C, general services, the private appropriation of four hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy-six dollars and thirty-three cents.
So, that's us as well, this one kind of dovetails into the last a little bit with trying to prepare for the worst of the areas. Again, they look very similar, so I apologize for missing one of the other executive stories, it's confusing, I'm sorry. Um, just let me know, I'll get that in order. So, this actually was brought about by Judge Hurley to me personally because there is a, what they call a medallion mural, a circle mural, basically peeling off of the wall because of the moisture and the water actually running from the paddock area down from ultimately the river center. So, initially, I had a restoration company come out, Conreg McStudios, but they came out and advised basically that they felt like there may still be active leaking and they didn't want to do any actual restoration work until the active leaking was subsided, which we fully agree with, and so, we kind of pivoted and we had Midland Engineering out to just take a cursory look because they have a tile rooper on their payroll, and so, he came out. The letter that was supplied to us from Midland is actually in that packet for you. And it also states a lot of the same things we mentioned here about the underlayment being vested to for life. And I think they need stronger word in their letter regarding the age of that underlayment. I, I've also received multiple concerns from court staff, including judges who use both of those courtrooms in courthouse one, the first floor, because when it rains, there's actually active plaster and water falling from the ceiling. So, trying to hold court while something like that is going on, I, I would imagine is a little bit of a challenge. And so, I've been in active communication with courts. And again, this being a historic landmark, we wanted to make sure and really address this to the T. So, we brought in, we as in the, the Board of Commissioners brought in Phil Architecture, so Brett Keel is actually here with us to speak to what he's found thus far. But essentially, we've executed a phase one with Phil Architecture, which is a full assessment. So, he came in, crawled around in the attic, actually went out onto the two sloped roofs, did some drone aerial photography and has completed his assessment to my knowledge.
We've got it wrapped, we have to pull together, kill costs, factors, specifically the aisle manufacturer, who is the, still in production with type tile that's on the roof. So, those tiles, inspect the deck, repair the deck at the underlayment, which is indicated previous, is the, we believe. But we'll also be putting in reports, issues related to the domes, specifically where there is some active those panels were replaced, well, the original group replaced in nineteen ninety-six with precast fiber reinforced panel, and the ceiling between those panels needs to be redone. There are offers to be some pinhole meets and panels themselves, and we've talked with vendors and our structural engineer about the appropriate techniques on repairing that. In addition to, I look at the memory, and the interface between all of those roofs, which, you know, you have a dome in the middle, have wings, north, south, east, west, that are the slow terracotta clad roofs. And the drum that the dome sits on and the transition between there, there's some masonry with some lead coated or a lot, lead flashing over the masonry, some of that we believe is deteriorating. So, it's a, it's a comprehensive assessment that we'll be looking at the interface between those different systems and the low slope membrane in the, or north, west, or south, west, southeast quadrants.
So, with that, obviously, we, we've been working on this for quite some time. I included a full project timeline, just so you know what's been going on. I try to keep a lot of notes, just so we can keep on top of this stuff. I do know that the board would like to also take this work to bid with Kill Architecture, hopefully shepherding us through that process, along with the historic preservation commission process for renovation. Because with it being a historic building, we have to follow their processes throughout this for the exterior, I know.
No, I'm serious, I couldn't be more serious.
So, so, yeah.
When's the, when's the estimated date for completion, twenty ninety?
Right, it's a very extensive project.
Oh, no, yeah, I said enough.
And so, this, this appropriation will not get us to the finish line, I will tell you right now, but it's a start. And again, with this being a local landmark, landmark on the historic landmarks registry, we just want to make sure we're being a steward of, of this structure. And again, there is, you know, internal restoration work that needs to be completed, but can't essentially instead of leaking.
Your statement, what is the finish line?
Um, essentially repairing the roof, getting it back to the, the historic precondition, essentially with the new underlayment. So, rewaterproofed and ready to go, and then, once we have done that, we can move into the interior where the painted, the original painted plaster in these two courtrooms is literally falling from the ceiling, so that needs to be repaired and restored if we intend to do that, which I, I hope that we would for this building's sake. And then also the murals in the rotunda area, both the rectangular murals on each side, the larger ones, and then the, the medallion now, which is the circular murals, all of that hopefully being restored.
Here, to get all that done, you estimate what that's going to cost?
I can't with certainty, no. I think we are going to slowly climb through this process, that we're going to come to an estimated number. Obviously, once we get bids, we're going to have the, the full gamut of, you know, low estimates to high estimates. And at that point, I think, you know, the board will have to decide how to move forward. But I think, you know, again, with this being a historic landmark, I think, I think it's, it's important that we make sure that it's repaired.
So, with the work that we have here, are we talking end of this year, being able to have this work done? And would we then be appropriating the rest of this out of next year's budget, is that kind of what we're thinking here?
I believe that's possible, our assessment would have been.
You don't think that's possible?
I do believe it is possible. We know that our assessment will be completed in May, with the budget cost at that time. Looking at or, or phase two detailed design documents for bidding, that would take, you know, six weeks, eight weeks to prepare, and then we could go to bid, a month, six weeks after that, back with approval. That late summer fall start.
Commissioner Backsmeier then see us budgeting for the second half of this out of next year's budget, is that kind of what you're banking?
That's what will have to, have to occur.
Anybody else have questions?
Mr. Keel, the, the letter we have from Midland, the second to last paragraph talks about failed caulking and or masonry work. At this point, we believe the building needs a major interior renovation. Did you find a lot of that when you did your aerial?
Yeah, so, I touched on the fact that, you know, there's interface of different systems.
Right.
And so, the parapets of the low salt membrane roofs, the terracotta roofs have an internal gutter. And, and so, the drum of the dome is a masonry, so there's some masonry work that also is tied to the project in addition to the roof.
Are you replacing the parapets to that extent?
I think it's, it's tuck pointing, repair of the, it's not replacing.
Okay.
And so, it's, it's looking at the entire roof envelope system, making sure we're looking at it as a system of the masonry work, the low slope membranes that are down low, terracotta slope roofs, which is where I think most of the leaking is coming into the courtyards or through that because of the underlayment failure, and then the, looking at the drum in the, in the dome. So, it's, it's a comprehensive, that's what we've included in our assessment, and that's what we'll be including in our budget costs.
Back to Mr. Morton's thumb down, the historical part of it, I know is they got handcuffs on you. So, if it's like pouring rain and we're getting all sorts of moisture coming through there, I mean, is that going to affect the, the fixing that, it's going to only get, I mean, I can't imagine, if they hold you up and hold you up for historical reasons. And this begin, we get into a ton of rain, you're going to have more tiles falling, a more tile, right?
I hear you, I hear you. Yeah, and I don't control that process, so I can't make any promises. I do know that I've reached out already to Historic Preservation Commission, just to let them know, hey, we have this repair work that is probably in the wings. I'm in the process of passing it through the proper channels, and so, they do have already the heads up that there is, there's issues and they'll need to be involved. I actually already have some of the forms that will need to be completed, but.
That's part of our scope is to lead through that. With our assessment, I would recommend that we're probably looking, getting calendar for the, the HPC for a certificate of approval. We've been talking with them on other projects, which are active, and May third is the next cutoff date for May twentieth. Precision commission, so we're looking after that. By the next cutoff, we'll easily have our budget costs back in front, back to you, bringing it through to council. So, that can be looked at, and, and I'd say by June, we should get their eyes on it for approval. Work is critical, and that's what we would make sure it's clear that this is critical as it relates to the murals inside. It's critical relating to the use of the building and the county's intent to.
Now, which, yes, that needs to be conveyed in a major way. Okay, because from my perspective, this situation is very much an anomaly as far as their involvement, and they, they should kind of shift their paradigm. Okay, if you know what I'm saying?
We'll emphasize focus on retaining the historic character. We'll emphasize focus on retaining the historic character of the building with the systems that are there. I don't think anything that we're seeing can change anything aesthetically, but functionally, the root has to do its job.
You heard what I just said, right?
Clearly.
I'm saying this for a reason, yes. My perspective.
Thank you, Mr. Schenzel. I know the numbers appear to speak to this, but others, this is the exhaustion of our ARP.
That's correct.
So the available remaining funds, this would eat up all that, we know it's not going to cover the whole cost of this project.
Right.
But we're exhausting them toward that.
Yes, that's accurate.
Sir, I don't mean that to.
Oh, totally understand. No, we, we, we know when there's pressure from HPC things to do is there's a differing opinion of issues of aesthetic, there is standards or that, we try and that's what we know from my standpoint, our real needs, real functional aspects, but also balancing with where their perspective is in a way that gets the approvals.
And this needs, this needs to get done in a quality, from a quality perspective, but it needs to get done.
It's a building that's going to last my lifetime and I also know that it's important for the building to function. We have water coming into the courthouse, not just for a three or four year period, but for a longer period. Thank you.
Any other questions? And a motion on bill forty eight twenty four C. Favorably, and a second, favor say aye. Forty eight dash twenty four C moves to the full council with a favorable renovation. President Blue, I'm finished.
Thank you. Next up is the Interior and Transportation Committee, Mr. Thomas.
Bill number forty eight twenty four D transfer four thousand forty seven dollars sixty one cents. Department zero zero six zero IPG.
Sky Matters, Department of Instruction, Planning, Growth, offices on the seventh and eleventh floor. What this is, is an outline transfer to cover the principal and interest on the leases for some of our equinoxes. Throughout the rest of this year, there's going to be a budget shortfall. So this will take care of that. And the reason there's a budget shortfall is I forgot to update the numbers. Leases what I didn't budget. I'm sorry, please.
Questions for Mr. Matters? Any no questions? Can I have a motion on bill number forty eight twenty four D?
Motion, I have a second, I'm doing a forty eight point. Four D, all favor. Forty eight twenty four D, he goes to council. Approval. That's all I have, Mr. Blue.
Services Criminal Justice Committee, we've got a combined hearing on bill number thirty seven twenty four. Forty eight dot twenty fourteen.
You get me. I'm Julie Lawson from St. Joe's County Community Corrections. I am seeking to amend the salary to the financial coordinator from hard time to full time. Boy, it's thirty two one sixteen to the pro rated fifty one one forty seven. So next year we go up from that. We came up with that salary based on what the right or full time point amount was that Randy's quadro held and then increased by the yearly increase that would have happened had he maintained that full time. So I'm just seeking to change it. It'll still come out of our grant money, just wanting to amend the salary.
Question from the council for the petition. We have a motion on bill thirty seven twenty four and forty eight twenty four.
All in favor, aye?
Guys having to go to the council for a recommendation. That includes our Human Services Criminal Justice Committees. Next up is Land Youth Planning.
Yes, sir, bill number forty dash twenty four, tax abatement, there's a vacant land at Old Cleveland Road, Fisher HP Old Cleveland Partners LLC.
Terry O'Brien, Economic Development Planner, my office is on the eleventh floor of this building. I'd like to present information on this one and the next one combined. It is one project, but there are two petitioners because one petitioner, Holiday Group, is going to be owning the building. The second petitioner is Lippert, who is going to be the tenant in the building. Holiday Group is anticipating building a six hundred thousand square foot warehouse, distribution center and office space. The cost to build this building is in excess of thirty nine million dollars. The personal property build out, which will be the responsibility of Lippert, is approximately five million dollars. They are, Holiday Group is seeking a ten year real property tax abatement. And Lippert is seeking a five year personal property tax pay. The building is being built on fifty nine acres on Old Cleveland Road. To tell you a little bit about Lippert, Lippert employs approximately fifteen thousand employees nationwide. They operate three facilities currently in St. Joe County. They have an office building in Estes Lakes. They have a manufacturing facility on Burkitt and Mishawaka and a manufacturing facility on Sample Street in South Bend. It is anticipated that this project will create a hundred new jobs with an average wage of approximately twenty one dollars per hour in the warehouse and a average wage of thirty eight dollars an hour in the office. It is not anticipated that any employees that are working on Sample Street or Burkett, Burkett Street will be transferred to this facility. This is a new operation for them. This is their aftermarket parts division, which they are going to put an emphasis on. And with that being said, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And Paul Fair and Joe Salisbury from Lippert and Holiday are here to also answer any questions you might have.
Joe's right here.
But, and, and thank you, Terry, very much for the presentation. We really appreciate it. We have a brief presentation, but a lot of it's going to reiterate what Terry already has told you, so we'll be very quick about it. And I brought handouts, yes, in case the technology didn't work, I've run into that a time or two. So as Terry mentioned, I am Paul Fair with Holiday Properties. With me are Draxton Cave, Joe Salisbury and Trevor Robinson from Lippert. Holiday bought this property in, in two thousand twenty one. And we bought it under the name HP Old Cleveland Partner LLC, which is a Holiday Properties controlled entity. We are the developer and will be the owner of the property. Lippert is going to be the tenant and will have a long term lease on the property. And we think that's always important. Sometimes that gets convoluted, but we want people to understand that Lippert has a long term commitment to this facility. As the tenant, they will be responsible for operating expenses. So the benefit of this tax payment really goes to the benefit of the people who are creating the jobs here long term. And we think that's critical in mentioning. This, the, the payments are critical in the, the economic package of moving this project. For while we're under design, we still have ways to go to get to the, the day of construction. And this is a key step in that process. Again, fifty two acres is the sighting question. It's on Old Cleveland Road, just across the street from General Stamping and Metal Works. Building is just over six hundred thousand square feet. It will be precast concrete construction. So a high level of quality and good aesthetic for the industrial facility. There will be approximately twenty thousand square feet of office space. So again, that's in, in the grand scheme of six hundred thousand, it's not a huge percentage, but twenty thousand square foot office footprint is pretty major. And so there will be quite a few office workers in here as well as Braxton Metro. We do have two hundred parking spaces planned for the initial phase of the project and sixty dock positions for truck traffic. As mentioned, the lease term, the initial lease term is ten years and there are extension options for Lippert. Total construction cost of the project is forty million with personal property investment from Lippert of five. And then I'll let them expand on job creation and their operations. But the last thing I want to point out, or last two things, our current assessment today is about sixteen hundred dollars. What we're paying taxes, I guess, not current assessment, our current tax is sixteen hundred dollars. So this is going to be a huge increase in the tax base. And so we do expect to, to pay significant taxes over the term of the abatement. And that's something that I don't want to get lost in the, the process. And then the general contractor on the project is Holiday Construction Group, who is a sister company of Holiday Properties. They are headquartered locally. We don't have all of our subcontractors identified today. But the subcontractors that we do have identified are mechanical, electrical, plumbing and fire protection. And they are all based out of St. Joe County. So again, just to give a quick overview, this is the site in question. Right here, just west of thirty one, near the intersection of exit seventy two through eighty ninety. Getting directly across the street from General Stamping Metal Works. So yeah, obviously the access to the highway system for logistic purposes can't be denied. And then this is the site plan that's being proposed. With that, I'll turn it over to Braxton to discuss a little.
Can I ask a real quick question? When you say those eighteen hundred dollars in tax, when that will further your trench?
So that is what our tax bill is this, that is what we are paying taxes for this site this year.
Most of my page miles. Fifty two acres, right?
Fifty two acres. I get him, I get him.
Is it ag land currently?
Yeah.
Ag land is protected by the state at twenty five hundred or twenty two hundred bucks an acre, so you don't pay much.
So as stated earlier, this will be, this facility here will be in addition to the sites that we currently have in St. Joe County. We're currently going through a network analysis and taking our, our thirteen distribution centers that we have around the country and consolidating those into four mega hubs. One in the Midwest, one in the West Coast, one down south that we currently have in Dallas, and then we will have one in Southeast. We're looking at this one to be our Midwest hub. Obviously, when you do, sit down and do an analysis with a group and outside firm, they try to point you to Chicagoland as being the place where you should be. As I was telling Paul, I'm biased, being born and raised in St. Joe County, I want to do business here. And with obviously Lippert headquarters being in Elkhart County and a lot of our sister plants that provide us the product, we want to be close to home. So that's the main reason for, for choosing St. Joe County. Obviously, completely different labor pool as well versus fighting Elkhart County and the RV industry as a whole. As a whole, and we've had great success with our facilities that we do have in St. Joe County, appointing good talent to employ. Any questions?
On bill forty dash twenty four, all the favors, yeah?
Aye.
Oppose. Bill number forty one twenty four. Excellent, bill number forty three dash grand, we don't park, we locate it. State Road twenty three, petition, hotel. Say it last name, you say it.
We didn't say it at APC, so I think it'll be all right. Good evening. This is Carl Brown, Grand Area Plan Commission Staff, offices on the eleventh floor of this building. So first today, we have a rezoning off of State Road twenty three for a proposed restaurant and retail plaza. It's currently zoned our single family and directly west is property zone, commercial, business and office buffer. Properties located across from Filbert Road, just outside of the city of Mishawaka jurisdiction. Currently on site, there's a single family home that will be removed for the new retail plaza. Here we are looking east on State Road twenty three and west. This is the corridor of the county, certainly experienced heavy commercial growth, especially in this area. And you can see abutting to the west there is the new Mirador Office Complex. Here's a site plan provided by the petitioner. It shows four suites within that commercial plaza, three of which are attached, one on its own. Both have drive-throughs planned. Also, there is no development plan for the southern half of the county where there are wetlands present as well as the septic system plan to serve the development. Additionally, we have a type two landscape buffer providing visual and noise barriers planned for both the east and west property lines. That should help to preserve those property values nearby. Last Tuesday, the area plan commotion voted unanimously to send this to you with a favorable recommendation. There was one member of the public, the property owner directly to the east, that spoke against the project. They mentioned they were not totally against it, but rather concerned with the overall commercialization of this area of State Road twenty three. They also had concerns regarding the light and noise of the proposed project. I can let the petitioner speak to that if they would like. But again, this does come to you with a favorable eight zero recommendation and I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have.
Any question? Only a question for the petition.
Mr. Guduski, Evan Marsh, three fifteen West Jefferson, representing, or I'm representing Tim Schrock from Ancon, who's the contractor, representing client. As Carl said, this development, it would see as a conceptual plan. But what you find on there is it would meet all county requirements, especially lighting, drive. I'll go through the state review, the septic as well. And I can answer any detailed questions you have.
I, I am a little curious just about the person that monstered, that entire area going east. Commercial, was it the house right next door?
And the type of buffer that type two, which is the most dense buffer, it would actually, it would almost act like a barrier. The neighbor seemed somewhat satisfied, but knowing that we would meet county standards, I think it would be as best as can be for the neighbor.
Any more questions?
If not, we have a motion. Motion is on favor. Bill number forty four dash twenty four, we don't park, we locate it, five zero four three, we are Bittersweet Trail, petitioner in chair.
Good evening, Carl Brown, Grand Area Plan Commission Staff again. So the proposal today is to rezone these three highlighted parcels shown here to allow for a new mixed use development. The petitioner is seeking to rezone the property to R two residential in the north and C Commercial District in the south. Today, these properties are currently a mix of C Commercial and OB Office Buffer zoning after being rezoned in two thousand six from our single family and office buffer. Looking at the surrounding area, we have single family residential developments to the north and east, including a typical single family detached residential development abutting directly to the north. Along the State Road twenty three corridor, particularly to the south and east, it's primarily C Commercial and B Business. There are also industrial developments to the southeast and northeast of the subject site. Here are pictures of the site. It does have frontage on both State Road twenty three and Bittersweet Trail. And access is proposed from both right aways. Say Road twenty three is a heavily commercialized corridor, especially at this point, directly west of the site, as you can see here. That's east on twenty three. This is along Bittersweet, looking south towards State Road twenty three and then north toward that residential subdivision. Okay, so this is the site plan submitted by the petitioner. The north portion of the site shows multiple attached single family homes for a total of thirty four dwelling units. These units will be for sale and are similar in character and style to townhomes built by the developer nearby on Cherry Road, which received similar approval in two thousand eighteen. The residential portion of the development also shows streets with fifty feet of ride away and areas to retain the drainage of the site. Additionally, to the south, you can, on the proposed commercial zoning, you can see there are two buildings there labeled Restaurant and Strip Center. I believe that's just conceptual at this time. One more thing, the development is proposed to be served by municipal sewer, but private wells, the wells will have to meet all the requirements of the Health Department. So in evaluating this proposal, we looked at the fact that municipal sewer was available at this location to the developer and that all of the parcels together have over eleven acres in total. When looking at the commercial growth to the south and then the existing residential to the north, we feel that this proposal would help bolster both by filling out that commercial opportunities along State Road twenty three and then transitioning away from those commercial opportunities, commercial developments with medium density housing toward the more traditional single family neighborhood to the north. At this meeting last week, the Area Plan Commission again voted unanimously to send this to you with a favorable recommendation. As part of the combined public hearing, a number of variances were granted to facilitate the development. There were two members of the public that spoke in remonstrance of this petition. One was an abutting landowner to the north, concerned with the effect that the proposed housing may have on their property values. However, today, the property is currently zoned for commercial and office uses, for which staff feels that if it was developed naturally, this would have a greater adverse impact. Neighborhood to the north and the residential that is proposed with this project. And then the last remonstrance was from Fire Chief Ron Melser with Clay Fire, who was more advising the petitioner that he recommends a separate well be installed on site. Who was more advising the petitioner that he recommends a separate well be, uh, installed on site. Uh, to help with any potential fire event, given the lack of municipal water. Um, like I said, it was voted favorable, uh, sent to you favorably eight to zero, and I'd be happy to answer any question. Um, they said they were open to it.
They're, okay, they're here all about, they said they were, they're open to it.
Sorry, it's Sean Mark, it's Matt, when I mute them.
Is, is the sewer coming up north out from Edwardburg, or where's that coming?
Yeah, so it's part of the, uh, the regional water and sewer, the Granger Sewer, um, I'm not exactly sure the exact line where it is, but, um. It's part of the Granger sewer. Nah, I'm not sure where the exact lines are.
Mr. Guduski, Evan Marsh, South Bend. Uh, thanks for the staff report there, he covered a lot of it, uh, the sewer is right next, uh. Next to the property on Bittersweet Trail. Um, yes, I believe the, the landowner is going to. Put a fire well and fire suppression, along with possible. Um, maybe possible double well, uh, one well for two dwelling units, try to minimize the use, but. A lot, a lot of wells in that area serve commercial and residential uses. Uh, as Carl said, in R two, as jud- abutting to the north is not much of a zone change. As what would be there right now, which is a commercial use, the density might be a little more than double what's in the residential area. Again, these are for sale homes. Century builders, David Srodzki is part of the development team on this and. Going to build a very nice, uh, housing for that. Can I answer any detailed questions if you have? Any questions?
Any other questions? Oh, I'm sorry. I hear you're in the five hundred dollar range, the residential units, or?
I don't think you put a price on them yet, no. Uh. They are for sale, though, there'll be two-story garage. Attached, primarily it'll be attached dwellings.
Thank you. We can have a motion.
Second.
All of the very, yeah, I, I suppose, motion goes full counsel, favorable recommendation. Thank you. Next, bill number forty-five, that's my four reason, five, located one seven one zero six, Cleveland Road, petition. Christian Life Assembly Church.
Good evening, more time here with Chris. Um, so this petition here is, uh, to rezone a property that was previously a church. From our single family to O Office District, uh, to permit the reuse of the church building as an autism therapy center. Properties located here just to the south and east of Hickory and Cleveland, uh, across from two existing funeral homes. Uh, here's a building to be reused. Outside of any potential landscaping, uh, that would be required by the zoning ordinance, uh, there are likely no other improvements planned for the site. It's just a reuse of the building to another type of use. Uh, here's the surrounding area on Cleveland. Uh, the site plan submitted by the petitioner, again, uh, we'll review it to make sure everything meets the zoning ordinance. Uh, once it's time, but there are no other improvements planned at this time. Area Plan Commission heard this one last Tuesday, um, found all five criteria to consider for rezoning were reasonably met. Uh, and they do forward this to you with another unanimous favorable recommendation. No one spoke against it or for it at the meeting, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you have on this one.
Well, yes, petition.
Oh, it's a petition available. The petition is available. He thinks even though it's residential, the south side, which we have on the west side of. Residential home and body shop is this. You have a stormwater detention. Say, very wooded lot of the south side, so, uh, it makes, you think it makes sense to, uh, rezone it. Um, as he said, not much will be changing with. Outside, just the use of the building, parking lot should be adequate in size and it's, uh, a very accessible road, so. Seems like it seems a very minor change.
Any question? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. So what, where this would go from being off the tax rules and back on, correct? With this new, new use?
First, do not pay property taxes, so it would go from exempt use to tax-paying use.
Thank you.
That Adam represented by. That John and the, uh, in, uh, owner operator should be outlined as well.
Questions for? All the favors say aye, aye, opposed, motion passes. Both council, thank you. Next, bill number forty-six, that's my fourth special use properly located at five six one, there's some both are. And, you know, dependency.
Yeah, uh, this is Sean Klein, Area Plan Commission staff. Uh, so this is a special use to allow for a concrete batch plant. Uh, this time we're on the east side of Larison, uh, this site is within the I E C core development area. Zoned a agricultural district. Uh, this site is viewed from Larison Boulevard. And then looking northwest across Larison. And then looking south along Larison. Uh, this site is on a truck route, that being Larison, um, so trucks could travel from Larison and then access, uh, two to the south. And then go north, uh, via Larison to a portion of Edison, then to Smilax to, uh, twenty. The, uh, site plan submitted by the petitioner, uh, calls for a, uh, approximately five-foot landscape berm along the frontage. They're then going to provide, uh, two evergreens per fifteen feet of, um. Of lot length there, um, everything, including the bash plant and the storage areas are. Well set back, um, over three hundred feet from the front property line and over one hundred feet from. Um, all the side and rear property lines, uh, additionally, there are really no remaining residential uses in close, uh, proximity to this site. This comes to you with a favorable recommendation from the Area Board of Zoning Appeals, subject to the written commitments on the screen. Uh, those being that the developers shall adhere to a berm and vegetation screening plan approved by staff. Uh, the truck traffic related to the special use shall be limited to state routes and the county roads designated by the county engineers truck routes. Uh, that all material extraction and mining shall be prohibited on site. Uh, and that the concrete plant shall operate in compliance with all performance standards. Um, in section one fifty-four oh seven three, uh, which would otherwise not, otherwise not apply as this is in, um, the agricultural district. Uh, again, this comes to you with a favorable recommendation, uh, six to zero. Uh, there were seven who spoke in favor at the, uh, Board of Zoning Appeals public hearing. Uh, no one spoke in remonstrance, the, the broad consensus being that of the three sites we've seen, this is by far, uh, the most favorite. Other than that, I can answer any questions, and the petitioner is here.
Any question for Sean?
Brad Webb, Kirk Concrete, um, I think they're all over our attentions, this is, as Sean referenced, the third parcel that we brought funding, so. Um, also, as Sean referenced, I think the community support for this is pretty strong compared to the other two, given the. Proximity to the other industrial activity there and really knows that. Dwelling in the area, so. Good questions. Oh, yeah, thank you.
I got, I have to intermission. All of the favors say aye.
Aye.
Close. Little full council, the fair hall. Last one tonight, bill number thirty-three dash five, for a reason, probably located at one two zero zero zero, Cleveland Road.
Sean Klein, once again, Area Plan Commission staff. So this is a petition to rezone the, uh, nine hundred and seven acres highlighted on the screen there. Uh, this is immediately south of the toll road, uh, west of Bittersweet on both sides of Cleveland. Uh, looking at the zoning and the uses in the area. Uh, to the north, across the toll road, uh, there are residential subdivisions, owned our single family as la- as well as a larger parcel. Um. Larger parcels that are either undeveloped or used agriculturally currently, which are zoned our single family. To the east, across Bittersweet, uh, there's a solar farm as well as an agriculturally used parcel owned by the petitioner. To the south are, uh, farm parcels. Um, there are two single-family homes on the south end of the rezoning, or to the south of the rezoning. Uh, however, those have frontage on Douglas and are actually located approximately eight hundred fifty, uh, feet south from this rezoning site. Uh, immediately to the west is the St. Joe Farms Plan needed development, also owned by the, uh, current petitioner. And then once you get across current, there are three cultivated parcels owned a agricultural district, uh, one of which contains a single-family home. And then further, uh, across the railroad right away, there are cultivated parcels which are zoned our single-family district. This is the site, um, looking from current. To the east. Uh, from the corner of Cleveland and current, looking northeast. Uh, looking south to the portion that's south of Cleveland Road, uh, from that same corner. This is looking, uh, southwest where, uh, Bittersweet essentially meets the toll road. Uh, this is the property south of Cleveland as viewed from Cleveland. This is that farm and home to the west across current road. And then the solar farm to the east across Bittersweet. The, uh, site plan submitted by the petitioner, uh, calls for a business tech development. It shows that initial development will be in the northeast corner where they're showing, um. Building, three buildings where the ground floor would range from two hundred and sixty-two thousand square feet, uh, to six hundred and two thousand square feet. Um, an electrical substation is shown to the south of these buildings. Additionally, there's an area south of Cleveland Road, uh, which is outside of the, the floodplain along Judea Creek. Which calls for future development. The petitioner is proposing a two-hundred-foot green buffer space, uh, measured one hundred feet from the center line of Judea Creek on both sides. Um, they are also showing or proposing parking at a rate of one space per, uh. Uh, three thousand square feet of building footage, square footage, um. And they anticipate a total employment of three hundred employees on this site. Uh, all the structures would need to comply with the development standards of the I Industrial District, as well as state and local regulations. Uh, related to the flood hazard areas, which we'll look at in a moment. Um, it is anticipated that, uh, predominantly access to the site would be from Cleveland Road. Uh, however, there may be one access point onto, uh, Bittersweet. All these access points would be subject to county engineer approval. Uh, currently, Cleveland Road is a two-lane county road, which sees a daily traffic count of over twelve thousand vehicles. Industrial development on the site would require extension of Mishawaka, uh, sewer and water services. And these utility extensions are currently being planned. Um, it's anticipated that the sewer extension would provide service to the area between Capitol Avenue to the west. And Buckeye to the east, um, toll roads to the north, then Douglas to the south. And that water service would be provided, uh, from the new treatment plant on Veterans Parkway. For the county engineer, the site would need to meet the county standards for drainage and traffic safety. Uh, and a traffic study would be, uh, necessary to, uh, determine what, uh, the impacts from this development would be on the existing infrastructure. Uh, what new infrastructure might be needed, uh, and where the access points should be. The petitioner is proposing the following written commitments, and these were, um. Subject to the recommendation that came from the Area Plan Commission. Uh, they are prohibiting, uh, the more, some of the more impactful industrial uses. This list, uh, generally mirrors, uh, what we did in the, um, I E C overlay with the, and it also adds, um, off-premise signs as a prohibited use. Uh, additionally, a traffic impact study will be provided per the county engineer's requirements. Uh, they're committing to that two-hundred-foot green space buffer along Judea Creek that was shown on the site plan. And the property shall meet all local, federal, and state regulations, uh, related to wetlands, floodway, and the flood fringe. And here you see where those, uh, flood fringe and flood hazard areas are. Um, this is naturally going to restrict the portion of south of Cleveland Road, which can really be, uh, developed practically. Um, and some of this, um, some of that green buffer will fall within these flood hazard areas. Turning to the, uh, state law criteria. In terms of the comprehensive plan, this rezoning would advance, um, several goals of the comprehensive plan from two thousand and two. Including goal to objective A to ensure that there are suitable areas available for industrial development. Uh, more specifically, policy six, which states that industrial development. Shall have access to municipal water, wastewater, and sanitation services. Which will be provided in this case prior to any possible industrial development. Uh, additionally, policy seven directs light industrial uses to be located within one-half mile of a limited access highway interchange, as we see here. It also advances goal to objective B, locating employment uses in a manner where the conflicts with residential land use are minimized. And, uh, policy three within that, which states that truck and automobile traffic generated by employment uses. Should not travel through industrial areas. Uh, the future land use plan map within, uh, the two thousand and two comp plan. Does not really contemplate any specific future land use here. Um, however, when you look at the two thousand and three Capitol Avenue plan. Uh, it does provide for industrial uses in the portion of the site north of Cleveland Road. Um, specifically industrial uses within, within a master-planned corporate park. Uh, that have minimal to no outdoor storage, which would fit with what's being proposed here. Uh, the only portion north of Cleveland that doesn't show this use, um. Is in recognition of the Judea Creek and the, uh, floodplain around it. Similarly, when you get south of Cleveland, that's being shown as, um, open space in recognition of those. Uh, environmentally sensitive areas. Turning to the most desirable use, uh, we find that. Based on the, the coming availability of sewer and water service and its proximity to major arterial roads. Um, including and, uh, the sparse nearby residential uses, that industrial development is the most desirable use for this property. Turning to conservation of property values, um, all residential uses appear to be, um. Fairly well-distanced from the developable portion of the site, uh, such that this particularly, in particular industrial development. Where, um, the more egregious industrial uses are being prohibited, should not have any, um. Adverse impact on the ongoing residential value of these properties. Um, nor should it have any adverse impact on agricultural or solar generating, uh, facilities in the area. Uh, finally, we find that it is responsible, uh, growth and development to allow industrial development in an area served by municipal sewer and water. And major street thoroughfares, um, and if additional transportation infrastructure is needed. Per the traffic study, uh, it would be provided at that time. Uh, just turning to the, uh, current site conditions quickly. Uh, again, as I mentioned, the Judea Creek does flow, um, primarily through. The portion of the site south of Cleveland Road and then a little into the, uh, northern portion. Uh, in recognition of this, uh, the petitioner did voluntarily meet with the Judea Creek Task Force on April ninth. Uh, this body is, uh, provides recommendations to the county drainage board and developers looking to. Develop within this watershed, um, to try to minimize the impact of those developments in. Recognition of the unique ecological and economic value of the creek. Um, so really, the, the petitioner just wanted to get some initial feedback, um. That could guide preliminary development decisions and what, kind of what concerns that this board has. Um, it has represented this for Mishawaka County Engineering Health Surveyors Office. River Basin Commission, um, Notre Dame Biology Department, Soil and Water Conservation District. Uh, the Friends of the Judea Creek and the Isaac Walton League. Uh, the petitioner at this time indicated that this was not a manufacturing use, and they did not expect to generate. Or discharge any waste and that there be, uh, relatively few employees and no substantial increase in traffic in the area. The, uh, task force did recommend an agreement prohibiting objectional types of industrial use. Uh, maintaining a proper green space buffer along the creek. And a desire to review proposed retention basins in the future, just to make sure. That, uh, they don't discharge into the creek if there's, um, exceptionally heavy rainfall. Um, I anticipate that there will be further discussion with the Judea Creek Task Force as there's more, um, detail to the, uh, development plans. Um. At the public hearing. Uh, this did come to you with a six to two favorable recommendation from the Area Plan Commission. Uh, there were, uh, ten who spoke in remonstrance. Uh, of the remonstrators, the most prominent concerns were the loss of agricultural land. Uh, the sensitivity of the Judea Creek and, um, additional traffic that might be generated from this development. There were also six that spoke in favor, um, this was at the April APC meeting. And we did receive four letters and remonstrance in total. Other than that, six to favorable recommendation, subject to the written commitments that you saw, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Of the two who voted against within APC, are you aware of their primary reasons for voting against a favorable recommendation?
My thought is with at least one, it was loss of agricultural land. The second, I didn't, he didn't really comment throughout the hearing, so I can't speculate.
The two no vote, the two no votes were Dean Ralph, who is the town of Lakeville, while the Advisory Council on Town Affairs appointed from the town of Lakeville. He's relatively new to the board, so this was only his second or third meeting. The other no vote was Eugene Matsett, who is the agricultural interests representative on the area plan. It's typically the Purdue Extension Director that the, excuse me, agricultural and natural resources educator, that person doesn't live in the county. So we have Eugene, he's a retired A and R educator who worked for La Porte County but lives in Saint Joe County. And I think as the agricultural interests representative, that could likely be why he voted. No, I didn't speak with either of them personally after the meeting.
You talked about tightening up the written commitments. That's one of the things I'm hearing is people are concerned that this starts out as a data park and then whoever's buying the land subleases the land or sells off land, they end up with something with heavy truck traffic and smoke stents. How can we address that concern?
I mean, I think three of these written commitments, if there are any additional uses that you would want to see that potentially the petitioners were amenable to, then we could definitely add those.
Okay, I think, I think we do.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
And then another question, though I had asked, I had mentioned this to you is question I'm getting from the people who are very positive about this, but they have, the question they have is when we talk about three hundred jobs, are we talking about janitors clean a building full of computers? What kind of jobs or are we talking about high tech jobs? What are we talking about?
Ilchello Economic Development Director, I can get myself out of the chair, feel comfortable. I think we're still trying to understand from a prospect standpoint, what the jobs, what some of the investment will be, things like that. So we haven't been shared a lot of that information yet. If it's similar to other data center type projects that we've seen in other parts of the county perhaps, it'll be a mix of jobs, it'll be a range of jobs, so it'll be analytics jobs, it'll be tech jobs, it'll be networking, engineer jobs, it'll be, you know, specialist jobs. It will be a wide range of jobs, so it isn't just, I think there were some comments made at the area plan meeting that, oh, I know data centers, you know, these aren't the kind of jobs there. This is not, this is, this is next gen data center type stuff. I mean, so this is, this is, this is not what we've seen in the past.
And that was Mr. Lindsey, Ted said it has been fifteen years. So can we, I mean, is it possible for you to tighten that down a little bit so we get an idea on salary?
Yeah, I think part of the challenge here is this is a rezoning petition and not a petition based on the project itself. So there's, there's, there's an opportunity for some of those kind of conversations as we go forward, whether it's through the incentive process or other points.
Good answer, sure. Of course, the question of water usage comes up.
I think Sean mentioned that this will be served by municipal water from city of Mishawaka. It's not going to tap into the aquifer. I mean, again, we haven't seen a final site plan. As we've seen in other data center projects in other parts of the county, there could be a fire well that could tap into the aquifer. There isn't one in the other project, but
amount of water.
No, well, there will be water taken out of the aquifer that goes through the water treatment plant, so there will be water. Yes, but municipal waters, municipally treated and processed.
And then some of the research I did showed that these plants, how much water they use also depends on where they're located. So for example, a plant in Georgia is going to use a lot more water for cooling than a plant here. Is that kind of what you have discovered as well?
Yeah, from our other research, I mean, very much seasonally, seasonably, seasonally dependent. So part of the reason why this area is very, very high profile for these kind of projects is because we really only have seven or eight heavy hot days a year. So the heavy cooling days are really those, those, you know, late July, early August, maybe early September. So really, the moderate temperature really helps these kind of projects, so the high water usage for cooling. Now again, because we're at the very front end of the project, we don't understand the cooling dynamics of the project and the heating. So there are a lot to learn through this as we've learned on other projects, but we would anticipate a very moderate level of water.
And then let's take last one I have. Concerns is for folks in Granger is we're being slowly annexed by Mishawaka. Hear that all the time.
So there was an annexation just Monday in Mishawaka for the last of the Girdly Leap Campus. There are parcels in between this site and that annexation last night that would have to be annexed before this could be annexed. Is there a potential that this could be annexed? I would imagine that then provided water and sewer at some point it could be. I would imagine that there wouldn't be any interest of Mishawaka's beyond that to annex any further project like this. I mean, this is going to be, this could be a very fantastic project for a community to have within its footprint, whether it's the county or the city of Mishawaka. So I think there's a lot of conversation to be had, but again, there's a large buffer and many of those yellow parcels in between serve as that buffer that would prevent an annexation directly.
Okay, thank you. Any other question?
Thank you. Mike Dan from Dan Charon Associates, sixteen forty-three Cameron Drive, here in South Bend. Sean went and did a great job on explaining what this is, even though we're calling this a business park, obviously the site plan that I do to council members, the main user is a data center that wants to go there. And the reason we supplied a site plan was we were at our plan on the very first meeting, they were strictly for the rezoning portion. The plan commission members at that particular meeting had some concerns. They really wanted to see how the site was going to end up being loaded out. We went back to the contingent purchasers to at least come up with a preliminary site plan that we use all the time for rezoning purposes. So that's what's before you today. Then we're asking for the, those three buildings that you see would be the data center with offices. And except about one point one square feet. What they also have here along Cleveland Road, as Sean had mentioned, is an area for a substation for electrical use. One of the advantages of this particular site is that AEP does have transmission lines that run through this particular piece of property. And that was often one of the things that they looked at that made this a basically a positive site to do that. Also, the fiber optic lines that are in this particular area made sense for this particular site. Also, the access both to Capitol Avenue to the toll road and to the arterials here, that made a lot of sense as well. So what you're seeing is, is that development for the data center that would be there. It's placed up there at that northeast corner, up against the toll road where it has probably the least amount of impact. Most of the property that is within the nine hundred and four acres is agricultural in use, so it is being farmed. But the difference here for this particular farm area, the owner of the property, Mr. Yerba, that showed up, and he gave a presentation at the area plan commission. He's actually had trouble over the last few decades of making it go with cultural property and actual production. There's a couple of things to go with that. Some of it is the soils that are out there. There's a range of soils from the north side of the site down to where you get down to Judy Creek, where you have what we call more of the organic types soils. That sounds great for farming, but from the standpoint of when you're running agricultural crops, when you get into the more organics where you have the high water table, you don't want your plants sitting in water by the time. So what happens with that is your yield constantly goes down. You try to overcome that by putting more fertilizer onto the property. Well, that just causes more issues because now you're producing more nitrates and they also get into Judy Creek. So what he saw over a period of time is that one of his main crops that they were doing was a seed crop, corn or hybrid corn. And that kept going down. And so a lot of farmers that were in the area were saying, well, this is great for farming. Well, no, it's not. Not every single piece of property is advantageous for that type of agricultural use. So because of the soil, because of Judy Creek, it runs through this particular area, that causes issues. One of the other things is we're at the beginning of the watershed for Judy Creek. One of the professors for Notre Dame had shown up at the task force meeting that we had, the Judy Creek Task Force, and actually said that the particular part of Judy Creek, when we always think about Judy Creek, we think of all the water flowing as it goes through the Isaac Walton Lake and those particular areas, but this is more of the headwaters of the Judy Creek. And the professor actually said that there are times per year where this is, you just have pools and not necessarily flow. And one of the issues that the farmer also had out here is that basically we've got a lot of water coming from the north underneath the toll road that's coming through the ditches and coming through these particular areas. And what happens is there's a lot of silt out there. That silt also gets into the creek that causes basically a degradation of that environment for the creek itself. And that's what they were starting to see. So that was also an issue. We did the, if you think councilor members, subdivisions of the north of this particular site that has probably about five hundred lots to it or will have. And we put in a retention basin at that very north side that holds like two million cubic feet of water. That's to handle the drainage that the county requires us to do when we're doing subdivisions. But the overflow over that will still come through this particular property and still provide flow to Judy Creek. I think one of the remonstrators had questioned whether that if this development occurred, but because of where you put retention areas and things like that, that that would slow that flow down to the creek, and that's not the case. There's still ditches out there that allow that watershed to continue to get to the creek to the flow. One of the things we have to do when we do the retention areas for this particular development, we have to keep in mind Judy Creek as well. And then one of the main things when I've done other types of development along the creek is the, actually the temperature of the water. That becomes very, very important. Water that goes into the creek, you want that to have a cooler temperature than you usually think of for retention areas. So usually if you develop a retention pond or retention basin, it'll have what we call a cold water outlet. So the water that actually would get into the creek, once that retention area fills up, would be the pool of water that will go into the creek. And that would make more sense. One of the other things that they had mentioned too is that any water that would go into the creek, if we were going to be doing kind of de-watering for construction or anything like that, they wanted to make sure that there was a detail that that kind of de-watering process that goes on, that water actually goes in as a retention area before it will go into the creek, and it will also have an irrigation into it, so there will be a fountain in that. Because any water that you actually pull out of the ground, it has a lower oxygen content to it. So they want to make sure that is part of any construction that we could do, assuming we receive approval, that we take that into account as well. So that was kind of the environment. The other portion was is that along the creek right now, there's what's called a seventy-five foot disheasmment where you're not allowed to do anything. And what I mean, anything, there's no structures, there's no parking lots. Those kinds of improvements that will have an impact on the creek itself. We were expanding that to two hundred foot. But there's something else that we would be doing that's not going to be done there today. And that's to leave a vegetative berm in that two hundred foot area. And the reason for that is, is because of the siltation factor. Right now, potentially if someone were to go out there and farm that area, the farmer could go and go right up to the bank of the creek, which would be within that seventy-five foot disheasmment. Well, when they do that and they farm and then grow crops, what ends up happening is is you still continue to get that silt into the creek. But you also get nitrates into the creek because that farmer is going to go out and he's going to fertilize right up to whatever that last row of corn or soybeans is. And if that's at the top of that bank where the creek is, then those potentially also get into the water. So it affects that waterfall. And so by having that buffer that we're talking about, and it may end up being bigger, but that's what we've committed to for this first portion, why we're figuring out how the development will occur in this business park, that that would be that vegetative buffer and that would help make that water quality better for Judy Creek. And that was one of the bigger issues that we've heard about at the plan commission meeting. That there was one, obviously, the agricultural part was production, but the other one was the creek. And we, like you said, we did meet with the Judy Creek Task Force. They had some very good ideas that we most likely will incorporate in site plan that would also be done. And that's to maintain that quality for the water itself. The other portion that Sean had mentioned is, is that water and sewer will come to this particular site. That's the only way this development will go. There's been some discussions with the city of Mishawaka for the extension of water and sewer. As they had mentioned, we just received approval for the automotive for the bus corner of Capitol Avenue, Cleveland Road last night from Mishawaka Council. That is going to require water and sewer. So hopefully from a routing standpoint, once we get water and sewer to that particular site, it would come along Cleveland Road to this particular site. One of the issues with waterfall, they, they look at for data centers is is that the water has to be very, very calm. And that was one of the other issues they looked at here. They want to make sure waterfall, the permission law, that it can be used for the data center. Right now on this particular site, I believe there are five wells that the owner uses for irrigation to the basically those will be shut down. So that that water will not be pulled out of the aquifer of this particular location we own. And my guess is they'll probably still have to be finding that water even a little bit better for the data center. As far as the question about the annexation, just so you know, here, the, there isn't any involuntary annexations that we want anymore, just because of purpose and everything else. So it's all got to be voluntary. There's for this particular site, there's only one point of contiguous. That doesn't meet twelve percent rule for the state of Indiana. So as Bill had mentioned, you would almost need four or five other owners to volunteer to become into the city of Mishawaka. It also has to be phased in. There will be no ways that Mishawaka could come out and grab nine hundred and four acres and run by any means or any stretch, because state law doesn't allow you to do it that way. You have to have that contiguous, and that means you have to just go parcel by parcel until it gets large enough to do that. My working with the city of Mishawaka, they do not want to annex and bring in residential areas. It doesn't pay. When we had done stuff over for the first portion for the Girdly Leap Project, people from the Judy Creek Estates were concerned that they were going to get annexed, but they actually wanted water, so Mishawaka can't supply waters. Some divisions, there'll be no streets to put in water and sewer. Nobody has that kind of money. Cities don't have that money to go in and bring water and sewer to a residential area. It makes absolutely no sense. There's no payback. City. So when someone says, well, they're going to come and annex, errors township, that's not going to happen. They would only pick, even if they could get to this particular site, it would be just a set in itself. That would be it. I mean, that would be on a voluntary basis. And usually, I know House Biden knows this, but usually when we're hooking up to water and sewer, there's an agreement you sign with every municipality, whether it's city South Bend or whether it's the city of Mishawaka that says that you rights for them to come in and annex it. But again, you ask many other people that would be between us and those particular sites that that most likely would not happen. From a design standpoint, or probably from construction standpoint, this is probably going to be a couple of weeks down the road, just because we've got to get that water and sewer to the site first to be able to do that. The past really the issue right now, our local city for trying to figure out the routing to get it to this particular location. So that, that would be the one where start seeing development once that occurs. And if that occurs quickly, they like this particular area, as Bill mentioned before. They actually looked at the site for seismology. You don't think about when we're going through a zoning process and someone thought about where it was placed here. But that's what they also looked at. And as Bill had mentioned about the cooling, because of the days that we have in heating, you don't think about that either. We always think of the snow we get. But they look at that and they go, that helps them from a cooling standpoint. They don't have to have water. So it's an advantage to them to be at this particular location. Uh, and we worked on with Sky. Meadows, it's part of the agreements that we had, take a look for amendments. There would be only certain uses that would be allowed here, but council has other uses. If they see they're outside the ones that are on the commitment. Let us know what they are and we'd be glad to take a look at that. We thought was that we picked all the ones. That really were the heavy industrial users, the ones that people most likely were complaining about if it came to their particular neighborhood. A data center is kind of a, a type of use that you don't notice. Nine hundred and four acre site, it's up at the north corner or whatever, that, that's not really noticeable type thing. Uh, from the driveway standpoint, uh, Sky has basically limited them to access onto Cleveland Road. And to a one access point onto Bittersweet. If you've been out to this particular area. The solar farm is on the east side of Bittersweet. There's a drive that comes out of the solar farm onto Bittersweet Road. That would be where the one access point is there. The reason for that access point, it works out really well. We have about a twenty-eight or twenty-nine second sight visibility as cars coming over the toll road. And coming down uh, Bittersweet, because we know they all do the uh, basically the speed limit. But even at sixty miles an hour, it gives them twenty, twenty-nine seconds of visibility. And then also Sky had uh, two openings onto Cleveland Road away from where the uh, the roundhouse is. So those are the things they would take a look at. Uh, as far as any kind of improvements. That would be on their dime. So there was a couple of issues. They were actually going to take a look. They have to have a traffic impact study. That gets reviewed by uh, county engineering and most likely also get reviewed by Mishawaka just for the heck of it. Because of where this particular site's located. So if. That traffic impact study uh, dictates that there has to be like additional lineage at the Capitol Avenue intersection. For Capitol Avenue and Cleveland Road. That would have to be done. Any driveway openings that we have like along uh, Cleveland Road and Bittersweet Road. You would have de-acceleration lanes and passing blisters as required. And again, that would be at the developer's expense for, for doing all those. So that, that was part of our agreements that we have, but like I said, the traffic impact study was a big one. Uh, people had some questions about the traffic, whether that would have an impact here. Uh, even though they're probably going to have three hundred jobs at this particular site, that's not going to happen overnight. That will probably be phased in over a period of time as this develops. So on day one, you may not, you may only have fifty or a hundred people that, that's there. Those in those buildings. We'll try to give you more information about the job status also. Uh, and try to have that for council. One of the things that we're also asked to do, we're, we're doing, in the process of doing is we're setting up a meeting, committee with some of the residents out there. Church, to at least go over this and we can go over the site planning of them, trying to answer questions. That they may have.
It'll be either uh, May eighth or May ninth. We're working with Bill's team to help schedule that. Uh, so it'll be one of those evenings. And we're going to try to uh, nail it down before the next commissioner meeting because they want to be able to announce it then.
Hopefully around six thirty.
Um, I'll just add also, you asked about the other uses. I think one of the things from having written, done written commitments for. Over a decade, one of the things is that the information about the traffic study can be worded in such a way that future uses would have to go through that as well. So any development of the site would have to potentially do a traffic impact study. And then that would help regulate what kind of uses can go there. That would be something that I think we could word accordingly.
I, I would say that. As long as they don't expect. Pollens to come in or out on Saturday mornings or afternoons, they can't possibly have as much of an impact as NSA soccer fields.
I think somebody told me about that, they say also the.
It's all better, it's all better.
And I'm not saying that to just promote or make light of it, but. Imperatively, that's a use that already exists. That is predominantly isolated to Saturdays. Uh, maybe not ideally, but it, it does handle that. Uh, so three to four hundred people eventually through a typical work week or maybe.
About traffic on.
One other thing that's changed since the staff put together their staff report, um, the industrial district doesn't require the amount of parking. That uh, the original developer thought. And so they are not interested in building concrete jungles. They're not interested in building three thousand parking spaces for this development. It would be developing enough to handle their larger ship. Um, plus maybe a few spots. So I would not anticipate this to be a huge parking lot that would come out of what was uh, described in the staff report.
Something on this particular site. Well, the county's got the ordinance for shielded lighting. Where you can only have uh, light standards, one hundred and twenty or twenty-five foot high, but we get it. So they don't have any light spillage onto the. Good thing here is we also have that three hundred foot plus buffer. For the closest residential on the side of the toll road. So that also helps. And now maintain that, then we should curb the long spot traffic. So you're not going to have that kind of impact. And also the retail space, you don't have that constant flow of traffic in that. And these kind of things. Probably like three ships, one likely. So they would be over that period of time.
And, and just from a standpoint of due diligence, um, you know, sometimes when we think of industrial, we do think of smokestacks. I'm not saying that every single restriction that has already been discussed on this property prohibits any element of a smokestack, but. When it comes to a data center, I'm not necessarily concerned about air pollution or water pollution or things of that nature. But. Uh, a facility such as this, I'm more concerned about sound pollution and sound buffering and things of that nature because the air handling that has to happen. Too cool, these kinds of data centers is substantial.
Well, and so as you mentioned, that's great because the county also has. So it has to meet those, those standards. And one of the things like you were saying, if they have that, it's on the building. You have to meet that standard for noise control. And I mean, they put it in there now because we're starting to see the more. What we call high-tech type uses come in that we hadn't thought about before thirteen years ago.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to commend the sighting of this is most ideal for that because the solar farm to the east, the toll road to the north, there's already a home. The, the traffic that's there of that nature to where it, it's less impactful, even if it's well below the decibel requirements. I think it may. Far less noise because in proximity.
The user is very conscious about how they buffer. And so they've already indicated to us that while they haven't gotten into the design phase. They fully anticipate that all their landscaping buffering is going to. So uh, they're, they're very aware of that. They're very conscious. They want to be a good representative. They take those things to a.
Mr. Building Plan Keeping the Buildings.
He actually is keeping that.
He is keeping that.
We may come back at some point if they hire us to do that. Right now. That had a PUD uh, resoning to it. Yeah. And so would that mean come back and we may downsize on that agricultural. And if, if for whatever reason, um, when it, water service gets up there, that would actually be connected to water.
You can see the carve out on the site plan that's not. That's the property that they'll be retaining.
We were trying to work around that, but we, because the issue was the zoning with that also. We've been working with them and working with Abby.
Spoke to that at the meeting. He said they're intended to stay there and raise the future generations. They, they've put a lot of effort into restoring the building. And so they don't want to do that. Um, there are some, you know, they may not. They've currently taken their website down and they're not taking new reservations for the barn and everything like that. Because they want to make sure they're completely compliant with everything um, from a zoning perspective, because when they did. I was here when they resigned. The PUD, I remember that far back, but they never came through for their PUD secondary. So they're being very aware of the fact that they need to make sure that they meet all the requirements. They're going to go through that process and, and if they do decide to do something there, it would probably be through the agritourism.
Fortunately, you decide that will be a lot of subdivision trying to link it out of this one.
Well, I think it's important that you got, you know, all the buffering around Judy Creek. You have the basins there. You got, he's keeping the farm. You have a lot of things here that are going to. Look familiar to people who have lived here a long time. But I, I don't want to underestimate, they're going to see. They're going to see buildings. They're going to see, they're going to see a parking lot where we have future development. They're going to see buildings. They're going to see a.
They'll see some screen also in the parking area.
But I think we need to be cognizant that a lot of folks drive by that going down current or down Cleveland. And say, well. You know, we, we, I think we didn't recognize, it's going to look different.
It will. And keep in mind, under agricultural, we did have really large green them as well. How long has he owned that property? Any other question?
Yes, sir. So would the contingent of purpose or. Be amenable to increasing the buffer at Judy Creek?
That's what we're looking at. What, what they'd like to be able to do.
That entirely within a bloodline on that portion in south of Judy Creek. And do certain things, but you have to be sort of constructed.
There's a lot of hoops you have.
It's just prohibitive.
And they may do something on that's outside. That could maybe possibly be part of the development.
That was one of the things is because this is still the preliminary and due diligence phase, we're just looking at zoning. They have not moved to design yet. And they were completely receptive to everything that Judy Creek Task Force shared and all the ideas. They just aren't able at this point, since they haven't designed the site, to say exactly what that would look like. Um, there's, they are very good stewards of the environment. They have other projects where they do. Great things in terms of restoring and, and reviving, you know, wetland areas and, and things of those nature. And so they're, those are already in discussion here to the. Design C J that they can commit to it.
The, the other issue was whether there had been other studies done at this particular site. And the new diligence, they have done other studies. They've done a phase one, they've done a cultural report and ensure. That there was any kind of historic values there. They've done studies on the soils that were there. And you, they're going to have to do the, the traffic impact study. So they, they had really looked at this particular site. They have taken soil borings on this location. That's why I brought that up about the different soils that are there. So if someone comes in and says, oh geez, this is just perfect farming, not necessarily. The water table on this particular site, what we call the Susan White Water Table, goes anywhere from two foot to ten foot. And usually the soils that are closer to Judy Creek where you think that that would be perfect agricultural soil. We have basically what's called rinse litter and long each soils that are down there. The Susan White Water Table is at the surface. So Judy Creek wherever it applied, every evening, just where that water table right now is starting to come back up. It's sinking around to where it's supposed to be. That's characteristic of low soils. You would have one half of the kind of going out there trying to plant things and it, and basically upcoming. So it is, it's just, it's one of those situations. And, and they're well aware of the sensitivity of.
My geography standpoint, do you agree that these detention bases has design, oh, it's preliminary. Do you think they would, do you think they would actually do the job effectively?
Oh, yeah. When you look at this, yeah, I, I looked at that and I, I already told them basically what the numbers you need to have to do it. And they'd almost beholden, I think it's, it's in excess of one billion cubic feet uh, capacity. For just what we're showing uh, for doing that.
You say in excess of one billion of that would be.
Yeah, one million. Yeah, because it, what we design the county for is a five point six inch rainfall. And what the county looks at is you have to have like a foot and a half of all three foot, which just means that if you're putting big hole around. The top one and a half feet can't count for the capacity. And then what the county does on top of that is they have the all six percent siltation character. So not only do I not get to use the, the largest portion of the basin for capacity, I also have to add an insurance policy on top of that. And we do not get to take into account the infiltration of soils. Where you're seeing the retention areas right now. And those are actually the sand, there's some of those that are on that site. So that water is going to be infiltrated into those.
And, and, and you say the um, subdivision water, the north of the toll road. Does drain through the property?
It actually does.
That's allowed?
It's, it's allowed. Uh, because. There's nothing you used to be able to do. Because that particular age area is all the way to the state line. Since maybe all the way to coming down from state line crossing Anderson Road, crossing State Road twenty-three. And it came through our property where we did the subdivision to the north. Okay. And we had to have an outlet. So if you ever go look at it, I don't know if you realize it, there's a big pipe underneath the pole road. And that was to allow that continuation of the watershed.
Exactly.
It's, it only flows once in a while, because we're holding the, the two million cubic feet. So if that ever goes past that five point six inch rainfall. Yes, there would be water in that bit.
I have, I think one final question. Uh, San Joe Farm LLC, I have a full Maycock information that is that the Blue families, they are the petitioner for this conceptual reaction to the property.
Everybody does LLC.
Yeah, but sometimes that's the development LLC that comes in. And I, when we were talking about the petitioner, I wanted to be sure who. The petitioner is.
Any other question?
There is a public information meeting that's happening in the coming weeks.
And we'll let council know what that is. Sure. We'll send it to you so that you know. If you want to be with that.
Mindful of that, I'd like to make a motion for no recommendation. And in that public meetings, I don't, but most likely that's what's going to end up happening because it's an incentive through monstern, that's usually what council likes to go with.
All I have, Mr. President.
All right. Next up is a presentation from redevelopment, Talio and Mr. Dolphin.
There is. Um, why are we here? Every year we need to come to you and the, yeah, report of what we accomplished last year. This is that report required by statute. Here with the board members last year. One of the requirements in the annual report is the names of the board members, sir. This is the Wyatt Economic Development Area, what the year was established and when it expires, because I think sometimes you can, we can track of when they started, when they're. This is the Wyatt Economic Development Area, what the year was established and when it expires, because I think sometimes you can really track of when they started, when they're finished. New Carlisle, just got a couple more bubbles on it, because it started, and then it got expanded, and then it got expanded, then you guys made another expansion this year to EAs three and four. AM General. May in the future change name, is that right, Bill? We may change the name of this allocation area, because it's really not necessarily AM General anymore, it's related to other properties. Fires in twenty thirty-one. With, with Cleveland Road, that was the general sheet metal. Okay, this is what happened last year, we received just over six million dollars in the two tax interventions in two thousand and twenty-three. You see them listed by allocation area. Pause there, since it has little numbers on it. Hi, Charlie. The redevelopment commission likes the.
If, if I could interrupt, yes, uh, on the previous slide. Is there a particular reason why the second installment would be less the first installment? Some people pay all their taxes at once. So that does happen quite often, if we'll get, if I'm five or maybe. It's just when we receive, that's, they get a tax bill, and some people pay it all at once.
Uh, debt service, you guys all approved each of these bonds, but this kind of gives you an idea of what's outstanding and, and when the bonds mature, uh, this is the, uh. Two thousand and fifteen, this is the general sheet metal bonds that were purchased by the developer. Outstanding a million nine. At the top, two thousand and sixteen, which was the, um, energy center bonds that were issued for that, that beginning of the project out there. About five and a half million dollars left on those bonds. The next one of the two thousand and nineteen district bonds, which were issued for the double track project in concert with Nikki. In that specific case, we were paying interest for a long time, waiting for the economic benefit to hit in future years. So you have seen any principal reduction, you've just seen interest payments for quite a few of them, like the first ten years. It was all interest paid. Back in the day, we'll make you get a three percent rate. Those were the good old days. There's your schedule of current debt service payments, the redevelopment authority bonds are not on here, because this is the two thousand and twenty-three report, so we issued those bonds just two months ago. This is what's left in the fund at the end of the year. See the, uh, beginning balances. The, just the revenues, the dispersments, what's left. Why was eight point one million different than the six million we just saw on the previous slide? That's because we have other non-allocation funds. Sitting in this list, list of funds. For example, the redevelopment commission has a general fund, which receives rental payments from pieces of property that they get rental payments on. Or other, uh, non-TIP revenues that flow into that general fund, they're not TIF, we're not gonna make them TIF by putting them in another fund. So eight million came in, more than nine million went out, a lot of what went out was the preparation for the GM project. We started spending money to get ahead of that GM project even before we got those bonds issued. It's the budget for this year. Your, your revenues. Kind of broken them, broken them down into each of the various categories. Expect to spend about eight and a half billion, this will probably change a couple times, because as we start looking at additional projects. Um, like some of the projects that you guys have talked about over the, over the last couple of months. We may have to come back to the redevelopment commission, what happens is the redevelopment commission has to approve every spending expenditure, just like you have to approve expenditures of all the other county funds. So if, if the redevelopment commission needs to build a sewer line, do a new project in, in econo- in an economic development area for New Carlisle. They're gonna have to go to the redevelopment commission to get approval to spend those dollars, even if they are reimbursed. So spend some money, you get reimbursed, you gotta get it rebudgeted again, to spend it again and get reimbursed. They don't get to just keep circulating the dollars without getting approval. Uh, did not grant or loan tax increment revenue during two thousand and twenty-three, that's all the questions on the annual report compliance. All this information then, including every single resolution that was adopted, um. Uh, by, and by description is all uploaded to Gateway, and you may say, gosh, I've never seen that on Gateway, the problem is it's a backend. That feeds the DLGF that they require for compliance, the only piece that populates to the front public facing end are the parcels themselves. Or you can sometimes pull those maps on Gateway, everything else is in the backside. They passed, it's like twenty-two. It's like they passed twenty, twenty, uh, twenty-two resolutions last year. It was a busy year, well, and I guess this is a pretty busy year too. Overlapping units, this is not required, but I'm gonna go flip, flip through it, because it was part of the same PDF that we were going through when redevelopment commission was meeting. Uh, this is a requirement of a different report. That says to all the overlapping units in the entire county that we overlap with, here's what our thoughts are for two thousand and twenty-four, so twenty-three, we're reported on, this is the two thousand and twenty-four thoughts. And again, some specific code requirements, what's our budget, what's the long-term plan, what's the tax impact? Long-term plan, not very changed, I think we've reported the same exact thing on the long-term plan for the last four years. We all have this, by the way, in email too. Uh, refer to page thirteen for the budget, because we just looked at that. We're gonna go through the tax impact reports. And in the full document that you got are every single parcel in every single allocation. I guess so is the tax impact report, sorry. Over summarized, so. This requires no action, Mr. President, presentation to tell the council what we did. Do you push this for feedback?
Did you email them today?
I did. I like the way, like, you already started driving. Friends, but, so we have to listen to you. Questions?